Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session for February 13th. I don't know whether this is going to be a long or short, we'll see, but we have one item on our agenda today, and that is the resolution for the local option. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and what I'll do is I'll just turn it over to Glenn to kind of walk us through this, and I know there's several motions that we would ask you to consider today, so Glenn.
So I emailed out last night, and you have at your places today the proposed resolution with the ordinance that's attached. The resolution provides some background. All the information that's in the resolution is information that the city manager has gone over during his presentations with you before. The resolution explains what the measure would be, and then just refers it to the voters. So if you pass the resolution, you're simply sending the ordinance to the voters so that the voters can decide whether or not to approve the ordinance. In the ordinance, if you turn to page three of the ordinance, you will see the changes that you directed Monday night under section, I'm sorry, page two of the ordinance. Section 2.201.5 subsection three, we added the language that schools owned or operated by 4J and Bethel would pay the fee not to exceed $10, and then we changed the $20 cap for non-residential to a $30 cap for non-residential. Other than that, the ordinance is the same one that you had before you Monday night. In your amended agenda, you have three motions. The first motion would adopt the resolution, and what that, again, what that resolution would do is simply ask the voters to decide whether or not the ordinance should be approved. To approve the first motion, the second motion would direct the city manager to publish and distribute a voter's pamphlet and neutral information, and then the third motion would be to appoint up to three of you to serve on the Voters Pamphlet Proponents Committee to write the argument in favor of the measure and to write the rebuttal after we get the opponent committee. And I can answer questions if you have them, otherwise it's just time for your discussion.
Well, I'm just going to take a moment because I think any time we have a meeting and it's televised, we can't take for granted that the people who are watching now know what we did at the prior meeting, so either city manager or you, Glenn, hit the high notes of what's the content of the resolution.
Okay, sure. So what the resolution would do is, again, send to the voters the question of whether the city should have a monthly service fee that would fund certain items. And on page two of the resolution, we identify what that city service fee would include. It would be, the fee would be set by the council at the time of the budget. The fee could only be adjusted by the city council. It would be a flat fee that would be capped at $10 per month for residential property and for schools owned by 4J and Bethel, and it would be capped at $30 per month for non-residential property. And again, that's the cap. The council could set the fee anywhere between zero and that cap, and you would do that at the time that you are adopting the budget. Any increase beyond the $10 or $30 cap would have to go back out to the voters for approval. As part of establishing the fee, or even before you establish the fee, the council would have to come up with the assistance program for low-income individuals. You could either do it in advance of actually establishing the fee, or at that time of establishing the fee, but you could not create the fee and impose it until after you have established the program for low-income assistance. All dwellings and businesses in Eugene would be subject to the fee. The funds raised by the fee would be limited to paying for fire and police service, homeless and basic human services, and quality of life services such as libraries, parks, and pools. There would be an annual oversight committee to review the expenditures to ensure that they were consistent with the limitations created by the ordinance, and that after five years of the fee being in effect, the council would have to review the fee to determine whether it should be revised or terminated. This would be on the ballot. If the council approves the resolution, it would go on the ballot for the May 21st election, and then as part of your budget deliberations after May, you could decide exactly what the amount of the fee would be.
And just for the information to the public, I would just add that on the first page, there is a list of what is covered within that fee should it pass, and that would be fire company at Station Two, police investigation, second cahoots van, teen court program, human services commission discretionary funding, Looking Glass Station Seven, Branch Library at Sheldon, Branch Library at Bethel, Downtime Library one day a week, Sheldon Pool, equity, human rights, neighborhoods, and sustainability programs, recreation programs and services, neighborhood park restrooms, and some park maintenance. So those are the things that, should it pass, will be funded, and should it not pass, will not be funded. So that's the upshot of that. So moving from that, I've got Mike and then Betty.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to just seek a clarification. What you meant was that the manager won't recommend those in his budget, but the council and the budget committee would certainly have the option of finding other revenues to do so in the normal course of their business. So it's not an automatic cut. It's one that will be recommended by the city manager, and I say that because certainly has been brought up at this table. We would have quite a credibility problem if we were to say that and not cut them, and certainly we have brought up at this table several other options for funding those, which certainly will come up during Budget Committee. So I wanted to make sure no one was confused about that. Secondarily, Glenn, there are a number of definitions in here that were a little confusing, one of which, I think the residential portion is fairly clear, where it lists each individual, say if you have an apartment house, it's each individual dwelling unit as opposed to just the address of the apartment complex. Wouldn't that be true?
Correct.
And if you have, say, an old house near the University of Oregon that has, you know, four apartments in it, it's each of those individual four dwelling units that all pay. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The one that I was less clear about is the one that pertains to businesses and to other non-residential uses. It appears to me from the reading of this that it's one property or one address, but oftentimes, as you know, there are multiple businesses within one particular address, where they may have a building with multiple businesses and several offices on each floor or area, as well as even maybe within one office space having multiple businesses that do work in that space. Can you kind of give clearer definition to that?
So the intent of that provision is if you have, and the easiest example for me to think of is Valley River Center. Valley River Center, there are, and I don't know the number, 100 separate businesses in Valley River Center, 100 separate stores. Each store would be subject to the non-residential fee. It wouldn't be one fee for all of Valley River Center.
Right.
And so the second, I guess the third sentence, the last sentence of that definition, each portion of non-residential property that has permanent provisions for distinct and defined access to an individual enterprise would be considered a separate non-residential unit. And so that's intended to address that kind of situation. You also have in here authority for the city manager. It's in 2.01, sorry, 2.
To clarify.
2.201.0 to adopt administrative rules in order to clarify those definitions. If something comes up and we say, oh, how does this fit, then the manager would go through the public comment process for adopting administrative rules to clarify. Those administrative rules would have to be consistent with this, but if there's some ambiguities, he would have the authority.
Say multiple businesses, two businesses sharing the same office, for example.
If it were two businesses in a single office, and you've got an office suite that has, you know, one access point, and there are five individual offices in there, and you have an attorney in one of them, and an accountant in another one, and somebody in, you know, the third one and the fourth one, that would be a single business because there wouldn't be five separate distinct and defined accesses to individual enterprises. So in that circumstance, it would be one.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Betty?
After the five-year review, I think you said it could be voted on again, but it will not automatically go to the voters, right?
Correct. The five-year review is a requirement that council review and decide whether to revise it or terminate it, but unless the council either sends something out to the voters or you just decide to terminate it, it would continue. The requirement is that you review it and decide whether to change it or terminate it.
And about the branch libraries, it says Bethel and Sheldon, does this mean you will add hours if this passes, or that you won't close them?
What this means is that they would continue as currently configured. This does not restore anything. It maintains what is currently there.
Thank you.
So Glenn, a question I have, because someone sent me an email about this, I think they were wondering, in a case like a Saturday market where you have a lot of vendors, would this affect them?
If it were the Saturday market, the normal Saturday market that's just in the park blocks.
Right.
This would not apply to them because that is not a business address. Saturday Market, I believe, has a storefront on Broadway.
Right.
It would apply there for a single business.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Anybody else? Alan, and then George.
Oh, go ahead, George.
Well, I just wanted to point, I was going to mention the review clause, which is very important, and that's already been dealt with. I think most people understand that. One thing I'd like to point out, this fee will not expand. It's not meant to expand anything. This is meant to preserve what we already have and prevent deterioration of the delivery of these very important community services that make this such a great town to live in. It's to maintain what we have. It's, I mean, I wish we were in the economic condition where we could expand all these worthy programs, but we're not. This is just to keep them from deteriorating farther. So I think that's a very important distinction that people need to keep in mind, is this is retention, this is not expansion. Thanks.
Alan?
So I just want to clarify, my intent, and I think the intent of the council, is that if the fee fails, that the services listed here will not be seen in the city manager's budget proposal, and they will be cut. And I say that because if we had, someone came up with a real revenue source that we could access by June, we would have included it in this proposal, and I haven't seen any. So my expectation is when we come to June and if this were to fail, we don't have those revenue sources, we're not going to be able to fund these things, so they're going to be cut. So that's at least my intent, and I think that's what, I don't want it to be ambiguous at all. I think when you vote for this, you're buying these services. When you vote against it, you're saying these services can go away, and that's okay. And I intend to support this, and I only do that because this isn't the first thing that we looked at. This is the last thing that we looked at. We've been working on this budget deficit and through the recession for three years, and we have cut $24 million out of the general fund. We have almost kept its rate of growth flat over the last several years, and we've eliminated 100 positions. And so we have done those things. So what we've come to now is, and the city manager and the staff have done an excellent job of trying to protect services and do that as much internally as we possibly can, but now we're at the point where we have to eliminate wholesale services, and that's what this list is. So that's why I intend to support this. I think it's a modest fee that most people can afford and businesses can afford to enhance our quality of life here. And with the additions of the things that we put onto this fee, that it have restrictions on where it can be spent, that there is a cap, the cap can only be changed by a vote of the people, that it has an oversight committee that'll look at it every year, and that it has a five-year review on it to see if we need it, and we can get rid of it, we can, but we can't raise it. On an annual basis, we'll look at what exactly that fee would be. Maybe it's going to be lower than $10 for the residential folks, and that's why there's a provision in there that says the council will set it at the budget process, because we might not need, we might need $9.90 or something like. So it allows us to be able to not go over $10, but allow us to go under $10. So it has that flexibility, but on the downs, on the good side, but not on the upside, or on the over the $10 amount. So I think the way that this is crafted and the way that we've put it forward is a good proposal.
Claire?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with Council Zelenka. I think in terms of viable alternatives, this seems to me the most viable at this moment, and we've exhausted many other options in terms of cutting and efficiencies. And I think right now, you know, we can't wait for new business to come on the tax rolls. We can't give refunds on the tax exemptions that have been given out. We heard from folks who responded to the survey that with the parameters that Council Zelenka just described, and that we're putting on this fee, that that's the option that had quite significant support among likely voters. So I think we're really trying hard to do diligence, and, you know, I have confidence, actually, that this will pass. I do have a question about the section that refers to creating a low-income assistance. And I'm wondering if the phrasing there, it's on page two, in the middle of the bullet points, "Council must provide assistance program for low-income individuals." Does it need to explicitly say to exempt them from the fee?
No, it doesn't. The ordinance itself actually contains more detail, and what the ordinance says is that the council has a range of options that you could choose depending on, for example, how the fee is collected. So if E-Web is collecting the fee, then maybe the most efficient way to do it is to use E-Web's low-income assistance program with some add-on. If E-Web is not, it might be most efficient for you to just exempt or waive the fee for low income, or to provide some kind of rebate. All the ordinance does is to give you the authority to choose whichever option makes most sense at the time that you're actually doing it.
Great. Thank you.
It occurs to me as people, this moves forward and as people consider it, that with the county on one side trying to increase the number of jail beds, that this particular proposal sort of puts the balance on the other side, where it deals with the provision of prevention and intervention and human services and alternatives for people that will keep a safer and more livable community. So in a sense, between the two of them, it creates a wholer response to the needs of our community. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's be clear. To say that this is our only viable choice is flatly untrue. As Claire has said, to say that it's the best available choice is a perfectly valid opinion. It's the opinion of the majority of council that this is the best way to go. This is the best, most viable option. It is not my opinion. But when we run into a credibility problem, it doesn't come from us not doing what we say we're going to do. It comes from us making statements that even those who are not well-versed in city government know are not true. There are other options. I've brought them to the table. Others have been discussed at public hearings. They may not be the best available options, or it may be the opinion of the majority that this fee is a better option. But let's be clear. Let's not tell people that this is their only option or else, because it's flatly untrue.
Betty?
Okay. I have to disagree that this was the last thing we looked at. We didn't look at, well, it may be the most recent, but we didn't look at a lot of options. I'm not talking about cutting, we've done that, but we did not look at other revenue sources, and we didn't discuss them. This came to us, there were two possibilities. There are many other possibilities, and I don't think that we explored them. I don't think it's the best option, but it's the one we're going to put on the ballot, I know. I'm very concerned about one thing. If this doesn't pass, would you actually close the park restrooms? I mean, this is serious.
It is serious. Yes.
It's a matter of health and sanitation, and, I mean, I would think that we could look at other things to close rather than that. I think this is just unthinkable that, I mean, you know that there are people living in and around the parks, and human beings unfortunately have to go, and they will do it somewhere.
To answer your question, yes. From a city manager's perspective, we don't want to do any of these.
No, but this is.
To include the restrooms, and so, but the answer is yes.
Could we change that?
Alan? Betty, are you?
I just. Could council change that?
You know, I think council, and I leave it up to Glenn, is there's probably, you have the legal authority to do, to appropriate dollars, how you want to appropriate dollars, but what we're saying here is, is my intent would be, if this passes, my intent is to fulfill what the wishes of the voters said. If the answer is no, then my intent would be to fulfill what they have also said. And council has legal authority to appropriate dollars and set policy.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can add just a moment. State law defines the local budget process, and that local budget process includes the budget committee having the opportunity to review the manager's proposed budget, to make recommendations to you as the council, and then for you ultimately to adopt the budget. All the manager can do is propose, and what you've heard him say is, he will propose exactly what's in the resolution, but the budget committee can say, you disagree. The council can say, you disagree. That's the way state law works.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Ben?
Yes, thanks.
Alan, and then Chris.
Just to clarify, Betty, when I said this is the last thing we looked at, what I meant by that is a process that I go through in my head, which is, and I think that the city manager does as well, which is, first, we look at waste and efficiency, then we look at reductions, and then we look at revenue. We've done an enormous amount of getting our services as efficient as possible, doing things differently, and then we made a bunch of cuts, $24 million and 100 positions, and now we're put in the position of looking at revenue. We looked at a whole bunch of different revenues, and I know you don't agree with the one that we settled on, and I know that income tax is one that you wanted to look at, but when I looked, and I did too, but when I looked at the Man Ross study, the fee had more than, almost two to one more people that wanted to do a fee than an income tax, even if we're on high-income people. And so that's why we ended up with a fee. And I agree with Council Clark, Mike, that this isn't the only way we could do it. We could do other things. We could sell assets, and we could do all sorts of things, which are, to me, even less palatable than going out to a fee. So the fee, I think, is a modest one. It has lots of protections on it from being increased. I know, coming from California and having relatives there, that when they instituted the sales tax in the Bay Area, for instance, it started at 7%, now it's nine and three-quarters, and it kept upping it without any vote of the people. And that's why we have in here that this can't go up unless we have a vote of the people. And it can only be used for specific things, that it has a group that will look at it every year and say that it was used for those things, so that we can have trust, and that the council will look at it after five years and see what needs to be changed and change it if we need to.
Chris?
Thank you. I think what I appreciate about the conversation we're having right now is not that we'll probably lose our will to put something on the ballot. I think that will happen. But it's like whenever I watch a car ad on TV, you know, this car is for sale for $137 a month, and I go, that's an incredibly good deal, and then there's all this fine print at the bottom. And the fine print has to be there. Certain disclaimers have to be in place, and Glenn mentioned some of those disclaimers that have to be there, and I think my other colleagues have mentioned some of those disclaimers that have to be there. My interest is to make sure that the fine print at the bottom doesn't make what we claimed at the top to be a lie. That's the most important consideration for me. And I think it's useful that we talk about how we phrase that disclaimer, or what are the conditions in place here, so that when we make our offer, so we talk about what we're putting on the ballot, we're doing it in a truthful, honest, and fair way. There are disclaimers, and we've talked about them here, and I'm comfortable with the fact that we're saying, yeah, there are certain discretion, there are certain capabilities, there are certain requirements, legal and otherwise, that we have at our discretion. But what I want to do is say, in that disclaimer, nowhere in there, will it say, what I just told you at the top of this ad is a lie, and that I don't intend to tell you that I need this money for this, and down here in the fine print it says, and if you don't pass it, I'm going to pay for it anyway. We can talk about it at Budget Committee, and we can look at options, and we can count noses and see what our opportunities are, but fundamentally, at least just for me, I'm prepared to say that if the public, through its votes, says we do not support these items, I will interpret that to mean that the public voted to say, these items are an acceptable cut for us. I may interpret that wrong, but I will interpret it that way. And so disclaimer is fine. We have the discretion, but I will interpret a vote on this measure to be the community's perspective on these items. And we can, we'll talk about that at Budget Committee, but for me, the important point is to make sure that our disclaimer and our claim in the ballot measure are consistent. And I think we're there. I think we've had good conversation around that to make sure it's clear. So from that standpoint, this has been a worthwhile conversation for me.
I'm going to turn to George to put the first motion out, but before I do that, I did want to say one thing for the public, because we've talked about grappling with less revenue and the challenges that we've been facing over the last few years. But I wouldn't want people to think that we haven't, we've been working hard to try to put more on the table at the same time, through our regional prosperity plan, spinoffs from the university, low-interest loans to businesses, a whole range of things that we've been trying to do to build as we've been grappling with loss, and we'll continue to do that. So we're going to cut some more. We're going to try to ask the public to support the services we have, and we'll continue to try to raise more funds to put into the pot as well through economic development. And all those things are things that we've been talking about as we've been working on this issue. Go ahead, George.
I move to adopt Resolution 5082, calling a city election on May 21, 2013 on a city service fee.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I have a question for Glenn. Now, the vote on this is not whether or not we agree with the hope outcome, it's just we're saying, yes, what you have presented to us fulfills what the majority of the council said to do, and that's come back with this resolution. It's not whether or not we're in favor of the resolution, it's just that we're saying that this is, you did your homework.
Right. What this motion does, I mean, what we brought back to you is what the council said Monday night you wanted to have brought back to you. This is not set up so that the council is actually voting to approve the ordinance. All you're doing is sending the question to the voters, would you rather have the cuts or would you rather have the fee?
The reason why I ask that question is because I, despite the majority of the council, I still think that going the serial levy would have been the better option, and despite the definition that Alan gave the other night, I'm far from being one of the rich people. I've been itemizing for almost 30 years, so.
Fall into that category, too.
At the end of the budget process, we come up with a $6.75 amount that we need. Now, there's a $10 cap, but next year, we could raise, the council and Budget Committee could raise it from $6.75 to $8.25 without voter approval.
The council, the Budget Committee doesn't have the authority to do it.
They can correct the base.
But the council could set the fee anywhere between $0 and $10 without voter approval. If you set it at $6.75, this If you set it at $6.75 this year, you could set it at $8.25 next year without voter approval. You would need voter approval if you wanted to go to $10.25.
Just wanted to make that clear also. Thank you.
Ready to vote on this? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. In opposition, 2. It passes. Next, George.
Bob Welch will be happy.
I move to direct the city manager to publish and distribute a local voter's pamphlet and neutral factual information for the special elections scheduled for May 21, 2013, on a city service fee, and to authorize expenditure funds from the general fund contingency account that are required to produce that voter's pamphlet and neutral information.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. It passes. No opposition. Next, let me, before you put that out there, ask if Counselor Zelenka, Counselor Brown, Counselor Pryor would be willing to serve on the proponent committee.
Yes.
Okay. So you can put those names out there.
I move to appoint Counselors Zelenka, Brown, and Pryor to the voter's pamphlet proponent committee for the city service fee ballot measure.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Favor and in opposition. It passes. Thank you all very much. And with that, I believe we are through with the business of the day, and all kinds of others with us begin. Back to business.